I'm sorry about that. So we are getting started with the Civil Rights Subcommittee meeting. This is particularly, I called the meeting together about the parks grants, not specifically all of the grants that we got for every project, but the ones that actually we missed. And so I just want to go around the room where everyone introduced themselves. I'll start with my colleagues.
I'm Zeta Govan. I'm the Ward A City Councilor.
Brian Santinello, City Council at Large.
Caterie Walsh, City Council Large.
Then.
I'm Ash Parks Target.
Kathy Bono Cafo.
Darrell Rogers, Park Foreman.
Thank you.
Kevin Garvey, Park Foreman, District Four.
Thank you.
Steve Long, Acting Controller.
We've got New City Twenty Two here. Okay.
You're not spared.
Laura Walsh, Senior Parks Project Manager.
Pete Crouseack Parks.
Mike Davis, Parks Department Foreman, District Three.
Alicia Berry, Metro Foreman.
All right, Parks came. Parks came to represent. Thank you all for being here. So we'll just go ahead and jump right in. So when we had approved, I think it was a veterans park and the land taken up two parks not too long ago. I remember I had the Parks Department when I worked in the Finance Department. And so I was just looking at some of the grants that we had got in the past, and it had come to my attention that we missed the P A R C grant. And there was another grant that we missed, and I know the P A R C grant had a different name before. And then when it transitioned over to the P A R C grant, that's when I worked on in Finance. And then there was another grant, and I'll look it up. I think it might have been the L W C F grant we missed this year. And I'm just trying to figure out why we missed those opportunities. And going forward, how we're going to make sure that we get those. And this is for FY twenty five, and this is from April twenty 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 four to present. So I got another list from Sequoia also that said what years we got what grants. And I know that the park grant we did not get in FY twenty five, so we could just start there with Tom Cathy to discuss why we did not apply for that grant. I think it's between five hundred thousand and a million. And we could use it for acquisition and renovations of parks. And I just think we should not be missing those type of opportunities.
Sure. So the Land and Water Fund that you're referencing now. So we did apply for that in two thousand twenty three. We were awarded a million dollars in two thousand. That was for Gordonville Skate Park. On fifth of twenty four, we applied and received a million dollars for Magazine Park, which is currently under construction. In two thousand twenty five, we did not apply after discussions with the Finance Department and with the Mayor's Office because of the fiscal situation that the city is in and fiscal situation that the federal government is in. It wasn't realistic for us to apply to meet that match, so we did not.
So the match isn't a whole hundred percent match. It's like fifty percent of the match.
Fifty percent.
And from my understanding, you can also use in-kind matches for that particular grant. That's what I read. So.
It would be hard to come to half a million dollars in in-kind.
Well.
A challenge.
Two hundred and fifty might not be a challenge of in-kind, and then two hundred and fifty.
It was just, it was a decision that the finance, that we are going to look one by one because the P A R C grant, for example, we always match with community development grant, block grant funds. We don't know if we're going to be continuing to get those. The federal government has been cutting grants, even the ones we were awarded. For example, the twenty million dollar EPA grant we were awarded, we had the grant agreements fully signed, executed, the money, twenty million, was on our line of credit, and they've taken it away, and now it's gone.
Yeah.
So we've been very conscientious with the Mayor's Office and with Finance especially. And I have been very tight with all the departments on what we're applying for, what we can match, what we can do. Because back then, I didn't foresee what was going on now. But, you know, like yesterday in the paper, the state of Massachusetts is in line to be cut, set three point seven billion. So this is going to trickle down to the city of Springfield. So we have been very conservative, and we have substantial amount of work going on in the parks right now. So the decision was made to continue and finish those and to try to, going forward, apply as many as we can. But grants that had matched, we had to be very careful in what we were applying for and what we weren't, because I don't know if we'll have the match, and we have to commit to it. And that was a decision we made in the Finance Department, working with Parks and the Mayor's Office.
I'm gonna just say this as diplomatic as I can. I don't think it was the right decision.
Okay.
I think that we have free cash that we talked about. We transfer some of that free cash to the reserves account that we could have used for a match. We have MGM funds that we use a lot of it for downtown Springfield that we could have used for a match. We have cannabis funds that we get a certain percentage that can go to community development that we could have used some of those funds for. So I don't think it was the right decision. We have never not gotten this grant before. This is the first time. I think it was a terrible decision to not consider it, not bring it to the roundtable to see what we can do. Was there an opportunity for us to use CPA funds? Was there an opportunity to even put in the application for CPA funds? Maybe that's a good opportunity to put in funds for now, since we know that it's coming down the pike, right? CPA is coming up, what, April? Maybe we should start thinking ahead of time because there are other opportunities for us to get a match to these grants. But we have never missed these grants in like thirty years.
We've also never been in the situation. We are in a fiscal situation.
We have.
And we have ninety grant-funded positions. And that's what I'm concerned with is the staff that we're paying from grants and the services that these staff people are providing to our residents. So the state of Massachusetts has never been in a position to be cut three point seven billion by the federal government. So that's, and I respect your position, Counselor. It was a decision that we didn't come to lightly. But I am afraid of what's going to happen. I am. I'm not. And I'm not looking to cut services to the residents. I'm trying not to raise taxes, to bond for these things. So it was just a decision we made. Not everyone's going to agree with all the decisions we made, but it was a decision we made, and we are having to look forward. And right now, sitting here, I have no idea what's going to happen. There's no.
None of us have any idea.
There's no, the state is cutting everything. And I understand.
This is free money.
I don't consider it free money.
I consider it free money. It's free money that comes to the community that we can restore parks. Our terraces look terrible right now. We have overhanging trees. I get so many calls on overhanging trees, terraces. And some of the money that we're using now to finish projects and do the things that is on this list, we could have offset with getting these grants. We could have offset and moved some of that funding around to get some of the stuff that the community actually sees, that the community actually sees and complained to us about, we could have offset some of that money to get some of these things done. Like with, I'm not comparing, but I am, when Pat Sullivan was here, and I was under the impression that we had a contract with Pat Sullivan to write some of these grants. I don't know if Pat is still with us or not. I don't think that would have been a decision that was made to like give away grant funds. We had a match. We had free cash that we used for different things that we could have used to match these grants. So I would much rather use free cash to match a grant that's coming in. But we bought more vehicles, and we did all these other things that don't have a match coming in. Like, they have no other funds coming in for certain projects that we approve with free cash. But this actually has a match. This actually has additional funding coming into the city. I think we probably lost, what, two million dollars with the other grant. There's one that begins with an O. Do you know what I'm talking about?
That grant is also a federal grant, recreational legacy program. We last received money in two thousand twenty two, a million and a half from Neil Park. We applied in twenty three and twenty four. We were not selected by that federal grant. The grant was not offered this past year, which you said it was not even offered. We will regroup and become available. If it becomes available in two thousand twenty six, we will make a decision then. In reference to your comment on Pat Sullivan under contract to write grants, he was not under contract to write grants. We have an excellent grant writer in Laura Walsh, so I want to make sure you correct it.
Well, I'm not taking any credit away from Laura Walsh. I love working with Laura Walsh. I think she does a great job writing grants, but I'm also under the impression that she learned how to do that from Pat Sullivan. And I know we had a contract with Pat Sullivan. I don't know what capacity.
That's right.
But I think that he would have been a great person to piggyback off of, to ask questions to. So maybe that wasn't his direct role.
To do that now.
Okay, well, we missed the whole grant, so how great is it?
We didn't miss it.
Not do it.
We didn't.
Well, you decided not to do it. Finance decided, Finance decided not to do it?
Yes.
And you had no say-so in the matter as the Executive Director of the Parks Department?
A decision that goes above hers and theirs?
I don't know.
No.
I don't know.
You should have answered that.
Finance, it was the Finance Department, and I did. And I understand you don't agree, but I stand by my decision. I don't want to see city services cut. I don't want to see people laid off. We're in uncharted territories, and we had to make some decisions. And I understand you don't agree with it, but I had to be careful. And we always match park with C D B G block grant funds, and I don't know forgetting those.
I understand that, Kathy, but.
And I understand you and I, we just, we're going to agree to disagree.
We're gonna agree to disagree.
That's the way we are.
Hundred percent gonna agree to disagree, because you come to us with free cash. You move some of that over to the reserves, which is very healthy right now. Did you ever consider using those funds? Did you look at MGM funds to see if they could be used for it?
I've looked at everything.
You looked at it, and there was no match. There was no in-kind. There was no, there was nothing else we could have done to get half a million, a million dollars into the city for our parks.
I made what I thought was a smart fiscal decision. I stand by that decision. We're just going to agree to disagree, Counselor.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to my Counselors. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President. So I guess one question is, how much money is the Parks Department using right now for our parks total?
Just so there's, we gave you a list of.
Right, so what's the total of it?
I'm sorry, I didn't do that math right there.
Forty-four million.
All in progress right now is eighteen million. Currently, there's eighteen million dollars for the project going on.
Five that's going on, okay.
Eighteen million.
Eighteen million.
And one point six upcoming.
Yes.
One point six million.
That's in designs.
Okay. Because the only reason I ask is because.
And that represents just about every neighborhood in the city.
Right, except Metro, that doesn't have a park that this money could have been used for acquisitions or even to. Sorry, you have the floor to even look at it, so.
Thank you.
You have the floor, and he spoke too, so we're gonna let her finish, and then we'll go to you.
Thank you. So last night at our Citizens Council meeting, we got a Neighborhood Investment Plan from the Pioneer Valley Planning Project, which I think is really comprehensive, and it looks really good. And of course, I represent Ward A, but of course, I'm interested in the entire city. So, you know, I understand the decision, I think, that Kathy made. I also understand what Counsel Woodfield is saying about, you know, missing out on a grant opportunity. But we are, these times, the federal government actually cut off, like she said, three point something billion dollars of Massachusetts funding. I don't know where that funding is going. We lost EPA funding. So I understand, I think, both sides. And I think moving forward, this is what I'm going to focus on, right? And that you guys have eighteen million dollars in money that's being used right now. The projects are being worked on. Our parks, I think, look beautiful. I love what my parks in Indian Orchard look like. I love Forest Park. I went over there the other day. It was beautiful. The parks, like Donna Blake Park, I think I rode by there the other day. So they all look good, you know? I think we can always do better. And of course, I call, he's not here, Chris isn't here, but I call V one one all the time for the overhanging, you know, overgrown stuff that we've had. You know, we could always do better. So I understand what you're talking about, Madam Vice President. And I think that the decision being made, we always talk about free cash, and free cash, I think, is coming up. So we're gonna start talking about that, too. I would love for us to focus more on what the residents are going to get out of free cash. It's like lowering their tax rates. I'm gonna start talking about that now, you know, as opposed to doing other things in the city. But we all, you know, are in this city together, I think, and I think working together. I think the Parks Department is doing an amazing job. You know, Tom, you inherited, I'm going to say, a great department with great workers, and you're continuing the job. So I appreciate that. And again, the Finance Department just got an award. Again, I know Kathy doesn't want to take credit for that because of, you know, previous work that you've done. But you're, you know, we're inheriting all these positive things, and I want us to continue doing that. We don't know what's going on in Washington, DC. We don't know what's going to happen. Nothing could happen, right? And we could be okay, but bad things could happen. And I just want us to be, you know, cognizant of that and to make sure that, you know, going forward, we do, when we talk about free cash, let's talk about doing something for the residents, right? Lowering their tax rates, because they're going to be affected too, right? If something bad happens out of Washington, DC. I'm afraid my business is dependent on mass health, right? I'm afraid a lot of people are going to lose their mass health, and then what's going to happen, right? So there's a lot of things that we could be concerned about. You know, this, I want to say is, in the past, right, we didn't apply for this grant for the first time in how many years?
Thirty.
Thirty years. So we didn't apply for this grant for the first time in thirty years?
About.
Right, about approximately.
What's the number?
I don't know off the top of my head, but there was a period of time when the land and water grant was not available from the federal government, and I believe it started back up again. Twenty fifteen is when I believe we applied for Haimealoa. Art, when it was announced again. So since twenty fifteen, in and around that fiscal year, is when the land and water grant became available again.
Because it was under another name before.
No, not land and water. It's always been land and water. The P A R C grant was formerly the urban self-help grant.
And how, when, we did not apply for that grant this year, but we've applied for all the previous years, right? So this is, I want to say, the first time that we haven't applied for it. And I understand your reasoning, and I respect that. Of course, we want to get all the money that we can get, you know, especially if there is, you know, free money. Grant money is always free money, but when we have to put in to do a matching, that's some of our money. So we have to be mindful of that. So I did want to say that. I wanted to highlight that. And I wanted to, you know, let Madam Vice President know that I understood her point. That being said, it's in the past now. Going forward, I think, being mindful and thinking about what's going to happen in Washington, DC. We don't know what's going to happen. So I think, you know, I know Governor Healy is tightening up the strings, and I understand why you're doing the same thing here in the city of Springfield. So thank you, Madam Vice President.
I do see your hand, Maria, but I just wanted to correct a couple of things. I did look up on the city's website for the O R L P grant. It is due in November. They have not, even if the federal government isn't offering it, they still have it on their website as, and they said the deadline is in November. So I'm not sure if y'all are not aware of that. In some states, it's not available, but I seen it.
It may be.
I seen it on this, yeah. No, other states is not available, but I looked on the Massachusetts website, and it says you can apply for the grant through November. So if I'm wrong, correct me, but I just looked yesterday.
So did we. And Laura did a deeper dive on that, and assured us that it's not available.
So is that true, Laura? They said it wasn't available?
To my knowledge, it has not been available. It says on the Division of Conservation Services website on Mass dot com.
Okay. So that's the land and water one?
That's the O R L P grant.
What's the L W?
L W C F grant is the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And then the O R L P grant is a sub-grant under the Land and Water Conservation.
So what is the L W R C grant?
L W C F grants are usually announced, they're usually announced in the fall, and they're due in January.
January?
January, February. As of yesterday, when it checked, it was not, it has not been announced yet, unless it was announced overnight. And I missed it this morning. And the O R L P grant has not been available for accepting applications since fiscal year twenty twenty four.
What about the P A R C grant?
P A R C grant cycle is, applications are due in July every year, and they're usually announced in the spring.
So did we apply for FY twenty six?
It has not been announced yet for FY twenty six.
But we did apply for FY twenty six.
It's not available.
It hasn't, not yet. We did not apply for FY twenty five.
July is FY twenty six. Am I wrong to think that?
The way the state labels these grants doesn't always match up.
With our fiscal year?
Which is why there's a list in your packet. But for the P A R C grant for FY twenty six, we did not apply. FY twenty seven would be the next round. The application would be due this coming July.
FY twenty seven for us. So did we apply July twenty five?
We did not. That was FY twenty six.
But did we apply July twenty four?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's Blunt Park Phase Two.
That's Blunt Park Phase Two.
Under construction.
And there's just a couple of things that Counselor Govan said that I don't agree with, and I'm just going to agree to disagree here, too. We have to know our history. If this didn't come about, will we have missed other grants? And while some of the parks look great, some don't. And I get calls all the time. I just went to Bay Neighborhood Meeting, and they were not happy with the way Blunt Park looked. So I'm going by what residents are telling me, because I know I don't travel all over the city, and I know that I don't see every park that we have in the city. But they are not all beautiful. They are not all, okay, yes, the Parks Department staff, y'all do an amazing job. I'm not taking any credit away from you all, but you can only do what's in your purview and what we can afford to pay. This is a missed opportunity at free grant funding that we have always gotten. There is no reason we should have missed it. It is in the past, but we have to know our history to move forward with the future. And the history has been that we missed a million dollars of funding. We have Metro Center, and I know, Tom, you were gonna mention something with that, that is screaming for a park. I was just at a candidate's forum. They wrote a whole book of lists of things that they want done in the city. And having a park in Metro Center that is very densely populated was one of the things that was on their radar. And so for that reason, it's on my radar, because I look at the whole city, because I'm a City Councilor at Large, and that is on their radar, and they keep expressing it. I went to a CPA meeting. The same thing was expressed. They need a park. We could have used this money to acquire land, do a review or something to get a park in the Metro Center. And I do understand that when we create new parks, we have to maintain them also. But it's still important for us to not miss opportunities when it's coming to funding. If we could get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of in-kind, because everybody's salaries gotta be paid to work on this, that's in-kind. Like, there are ways. I worked in Finance, so it's like really hard for me to believe that we couldn't come up with a match for this. And we have been here before, because I worked in the city of Springfield when it was a recession. And we've been here before. We've been here when funding was getting cut. We've been here when jobs were being furloughed, because my job was furloughed. This isn't the first time in history that this has ever happened, and it won't be the last. We gotta make it through this time, but we still gotta make sure that we get all the funding that we can to service our community. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Maria and then Victor, Counsel Perez, and then Counsel Davila.
Chief Madam Chair, I just want to know for the parks that are being developed right now, they not going to be impacted by this decision-making, correct?
Correct. That funding's already been applied.
Okay, and yeah, I have to say thank you. The parks here are looking tremendous. I know we have other sites, and we have discussed that, but thank you to the Park Department for the fine work that you are doing. Thank you so much.
Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Tracy, Madam Chair. I just want to ask Kathy, I just want to do a quick recap, because I know a lot has been said. Did I hear that the federal government is gonna cut three point seven billion, would it be, from the state government?
There was an article that the Massachusetts is expecting to lose three point seven billion in funding.
Do you have any rough idea to what that would translate for Springfield? How much money lost?
Oh, we do not. We do not know how it will trickle down, but as Massachusetts gets cut, there's always a trickle-down effect, and Springfield. And they've also mentioned nine C cuts during this fiscal year. So they may be cutting the budget that they've already put in place for this fiscal year. So all we're doing is waiting to see how, and the first will be if they can pass a federal budget.
Yeah, refresh, what are the nine C cuts?
Excuse me?
Refresh our memory, what are the nine C cuts?
Would be cuts to the budget, the funding that we receive from the state.
Okay. Now, Kathy, walk me through, I understand that was a decision that you guys made for not applying to this grant. What was, refresh my memory, what is the grant that you, is it one or two grants you guys didn't apply for?
It's one grant. It's a P A R C grant. We've always applied for, and since I've worked, and I'm not gonna give you the date, because of.
Yeah.
Tell you how old I am. But I've been in, I was in the Community Development Office. We have always matched that grant with community development block grant funds. Those are now in jeopardy. We did not know if we were getting them. They ended up passing a continuing resolution, so we were able to get those funds for this current year. But we don't know going forward. So the decision was made because we don't have those matching funds that this one year we would hold off and not apply for that grant.
Right. Now, Kathy, if you could kindly walk me through the criteria and the logic that was used, whether we agree or not, I just want to know, what was your thinking, what criteria, if there's any, did you use to not apply for this grant?
I don't know if I had a criteria. What I did was, we had to make a decision for what grants require a match. And the fact that there is substantial cutting, there's no federal budget, we have ninety grant-funded positions. I'm not looking to lay off staff, cut city services, so. It was this decision that was made to just hold off this one year, because we didn't have the matching funds that we've had in the past.
And how much, how much that would have been the match that we have to.
Normally, we match, C D B G comes up, C D B G funds, the Park Department are between six and seven hundred thousand a year.
What about this particular, particular grant?
It depends on what you apply for. So anywhere from up to a million, C D B G would match the five hundred thousand.
So either way, you were concerned that we were not going to be able to match it?
I was concerned that C D B G wasn't going to be available, and I'm trying, and I know we have, thank goodness, we have healthy reserves, and because we have them going forward.
Got you. Now, Tom, good to see you. Quick question. I think, I'm not sure, that I overheard something that we don't have parks in the Metro Center. Is that accurate?
That is not, not accurate at all. I'm glad I have my district chiefs here. It was Barry who's responsible for the downtown cleanup of all of our parks in the metro area. And so amongst those are Riverfront Park, Court Square Park, Stern Square Park, Pension Park, Armory Commons, Thirty-Eight Way. So the notion that there's no parks in the metro area is simply untrue. And Alicia can speak to that if you like further detail on that, Counselor, but there are certainly parks in the metro area.
Yeah, I sort of want to, I sort of want to stay within the line of this meeting, which I believe is just the, why we missed, why we did not apply for the P A R C grant. But if you could just give me a thirty-second overview, how are those parks faring in comparison to other parks throughout the city?
Sure. So we just finished the project at Court Square Park. It was a seven point five million dollar project, six million, which was from the city, one point five from the Gaming Commission. Just recently turned the keys back over from there. Other parks we're doing great work at. Riverfront Park is immaculate, as many of you saw at the nine eleven ceremony. And by the way, Mike Davis is our District Three Supervisor, and Mike Blunt Park was amazing. So thank you for the work you're doing. So all the parks that are in the metro area, Alicia and her crew do a great job, Counselor, of keeping on top of, cleaning every day, mowing every day, and all those things that go into beautification of the parks. So we're.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Tommy. I just want to finish with this, Madam Chair, if I may. I echo the concerns. I think we all have the same concern in this room about the potential cuts or the cuts that will come to the city of Springfield. I think we all know that we're living very difficult, weird times. And so I think, again, I cannot pass this opportunity to say that this is a perfect opportunity for us as a city to continue. that this is a perfect opportunity for us as a city to continue to push and create a pilot program that makes sense and works for all of us. In the near future, I will be making uh, some official recommendations to the city uh, on this issue because there will be extra revenue that could be used to so many things in the city, starting with property taxes. So, um, again, I call again that this is a perfect opportunity to develop the pilot uh, program here for the, the payment lieu of taxes here for the city of Springfield. Uh, with that being said, um, Madam Chair, thank you for putting this meeting together. Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. So I'm gonna say this. A department head is gonna say his department does great work. Again, I'm not taking credit from anybody in the Parks Department. You can only do what you can in the realm of what you're instructed to do, what you're paid to do. However, when I bring these issues to the city council, it's from the neighborhood councils, it's from the residents. So, we can all sit here and say how great of a job everyone is doing, but when my residents and my constituents come to me, and I was just at the Bay Neighborhood Council yesterday, unfortunately, I forgot the list of concerns that they asked me to bring, but there were some concerns dealing with Blunt Park. Am I blaming you for that? No, because you don't control the traffic, you don't control the foot traffic, you don't control. I love working with you at Blunt, Blunt Park on Juneteenth. It's always immaculate for our um, for our um, festivals and things like that. You, you guys do do a great job. So, any department head is gonna sit here and say, oh, we have the best department, we do the best work, but when we have terraces that still um, need to be done, when we have over, overhanging trees, which is still part of the Parks Department that is obstructing um, the park um, traffic. One of the things that I did here at the Bay Neighborhood Council was there are overhanging trees that's obstructing traffic right on Roosevelt Ave. Um, that was something else. There's something else that I gotta deal with with D P W. So we can all sit here and say how great everything looks, but when my constituents and the residents of the city of Springfield disagree and it's their tax money, and their tax money should have the access to what they wanna see in the city of Springfield, I'm going to bring that, those concerns forward. Whether you all agree with me, disagree with me, that is not my concern. What is my concern is what my constituent says. I went to that meeting. I went to the neighborhood meeting in the metro area where they said the most densely populated area of the metro center does not have a park. So you can say Riverfront, you can say Court Square and all these parks that you always pay attention to, that's nothing new. Um, however, they wanted something right in the most densely populated area of the metro um, center. They wanted something for their kids that they could safely walk to. They actually brought up the gas explosion location and maybe converting that to the park. They also wanted to see calisthenics, water parks and all these things that may sit at Riverfront that they have to travel a little distance to, but it does not sit in Court Square and it does not sit in Stern Square where they are closest to. So they will have to go through all that traffic. Some of them do not have transportation and this is what they're asking for. So, I mean, you can name all the parks that you named, but they don't have playscapes and water parks and, and calisthenics and the things that the residents are coming to me and discussing with me. So, I only brought this meeting to our attention to ensure that we have a conversation before we say we're not gonna go on for a grant. Kathy, was there any other grants that you decided not to um, um, write because they didn't have a match that you can think of?
Not off the top of my head, but.
The one, one, one million?
Counselor, I'm not pinning, you asked me a question. Um, what we do every time there's a grant opportunity, we have a Grants Director within my department, is we look at that grant. We look at what it's for, what it's eligible for. We meet with the departments. So there have been, and I, I, I wasn't um, ready to speak to that, but there are grants that have come over our desk that didn't make sense to apply for. Whether we didn't have the match or whether it didn't make sense at that time or the department had turned around, I don't have those off the top of my head. I can say that we're obviously not gonna agree, but that, it was a financial decision that we made because that grant typically, since I've worked in C D B G in nineteen ninety seven, we've used C D B G block grant funds to match it. We made that decision not to do it one year for that one grant. So, um, that was, but I can't speak to other ones, but it, it isn't just apply to everyone. There is decisions on it. You worked in finance, you know that some grants just don't make sense or it, it isn't for things that the city, dollars of the city's going to do. So every grant opportunity, that's why we have a Grants uh, Director in my office, because we look at that and we work with the departments.
Well, I can understand grants not making sense, but it made sense for the last ten years. Just last year it didn't make sense. That, that doesn't make sense to me.
But we agreed.
So, yeah, we will, and we will continue, but.
Yep.
Um, in the future, if it's a grant that we have gotten year over year over year over year, before you make that decision, would you mind having a conversation? So it, it doesn't pop up on, on our desk and things like that. I actually called the state and were a little bit surprised that we didn't apply for it because we have applied for it, like Laura says, since twenty fifteen. And so to make a decision just off the bat that this is the one?
I don't, um, I don't, I do have to point out the fact that I didn't make it just like that, that it was thoughtful and we have, as I do everything, it was a team meeting with our finance staff and we, we came to that decision. I know you're not gonna agree, but again, I don't know what we're facing. I, I don't wanna lay off people. I don't wanna cut services. I, I just, I don't know. And the state's not in a good position and they keep cutting things. So, I mean, we just lost all our mitigation money. Um, so, you know, it, it, it wasn't just, oh, let's not.
Yeah, but it's one grant out of all of them. So if you could give me the data on how many grants we got in the past that we have matched, um, I would, I would like to see that data. I wanna see the ones that we put a match for this year to see how important they are over the Parks one. I, I wanna, I want that data. Um, I wanna see what we matched this year, where the matching funds came from. Um, and the ones, the grants that come before us that we've never applied for, for, that it doesn't make sense to apply for, I can totally agree with you and can understand that, but what we've been getting for fifteen years, I just can't understand why we wouldn't do it for one year. It's, it was your physical responsibility. I understand that.
And I'm standing here saying.
Disagree, but I'm gonna give Counsel Allen the floor.
Yeah, thanks, um, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, as Chair of Finance, I work with Kathy a lot and uh, we have Finance Committee meetings on a regular basis before every regular meeting. So probably twenty, twenty-five a year, maybe thirty. There's a lot of fin- everything involves finance. And we have a regular meeting every couple of weeks before the regular, uh, we have a regular meeting before the council regular meeting. So Kathy, I'm wondering if we could consider adding some of this to a re- our regular finance agenda in addition to the items that are on the, our normal agenda is the items that are on the council meeting that night. Is to make some sense to, you know, just have another part of the agendas that we're meeting anyway, to say, here's some things we'd like to pass on informationally or consider uh, for maybe at another meeting talking about, because I'm thinking that your job in the year and a half you had the job, uh, I think that's it. Um, um.
Long year and a half.
A long year and a half and how things have changed uh, on, on the, on the macro level from the federal government to the uncertainty that we face every day. Our government is currently shut down. Um, and nobody seems to be that interested in going out of their way to get us back open again. I don't mean people here, I mean on the federal level. Um, it, you know, maybe you could talk at our, at our Finance Committee meeting about how your job has changed just in that time and how you, you, you need to, well, you're, you're worried about something going wrong that's gonna really hit us. So what have you done, you know, that you're concerned about that you could share with us? You know, not tonight, not today, but at a, at maybe at the next finance meeting or something, how your decision making thing has changed.
Discuss that, Counselor. We can discuss that.
Yeah, or, or make, make an, an agenda item in our next meeting.
It's day to day right now and I, so, yeah.
But for us to understand that, because we're not sitting here, and just to bring it to the council, we have a forum where we can do that and, and do it in not a contentious way, but in a in- informational way. And the things that are crossing your desk that affect you, that affect how the city's outlook might be financially and stuff, I think. That may be something we can add to that discussion.
Yeah, maybe that'd be a good idea, just to have an overall Finance Committee meeting, just to talk about um, how those decisions are made because it's just hard for me to swallow that after fifteen, ten years, we just decide, no, this isn't the one. I think it was a missed opportunity. Um, I'm gonna say that. Um.
Okay, so you've said it. You've said it.
And I'm saying it to me, you're not gonna stop me. You're not gonna, you're not gonna, but please don't. I didn't interrupt you when you were talking. Please don't interrupt me when I'm talking. Like, no one shuts me down. Don't do that.
Well, I would just like to say that our finances are, are in pretty good shape. Eighty million dollar, what do we have in reserves? Eighty million?
Seventy.
Seventy-four million. Um, our bond reading is the best it's ever been, so some decisions that have been made have been good decisions. Because the outcome of them is we're in the best financial position we've been in that, that I can remember. I've been on the council sixteen years. I'm not sure we've been in a position that's as strong as this. And we made some, and we missed something. Apparently we missed this, but um, you know, there, there's, there's another side to it. When you're conservative, some other things are going well. When you're, when you're risky, um, you know, or maybe to do it. So Kathy had a, had an approach that, you know, some people in here don't agree with, but there is another side to that approach, that we're in a better position financially than we've been in sixteen years I've been here. Well, when I came on the, on the council, the Control Board left the day before and people wondered if uh, the city council was equipped to manage the city's finances after we had just delegated it to the Control Board for five years. They left at the end of oh nine and several of us, including Melvin, Mike, all the ward counselors, we all started the next day. And so, a lot of good decisions have been made by the finance decision, I'm sorry, by the finance. And, and we all, we all benefit from all those decisions. There's a ton of good stuff. Um, it's just that this, obviously we need to add a little process or a little way to discuss this kinda stuff a little better. Am I happy to offer that committee meeting to that?
Thank you, Tim. Um, you have done good work, Kathy. I'm not gonna say you haven't in the finance team. I liked working in finance because it tells a story about what goes on in the city. I just disagree with this um, particular decision. We're, we're not gonna be enemies after that. I'm sure I will. I have in the past. Um, so I'm not taking away from the work that the finance team does overall. I'm not going back to the Financial Control Board ever again because I started working in twenty ten, right when it happened. That wasn't the time when we were, but it's over. That is way, way in the past and we bring it up all the time, but it's way, way in the past. We have been through another recession since then. So, um, yes, Financial Control Board days are over, been over. Um, I started working with the city twenty ten when, when it all happened, took furloughs, been there, did like fiscal prudence, brought us out of that. I don't know we're in the best we've ever been, but we are very close. Um, and I'm just proud of what the finance department does overall. This decision just wasn't my favorite. I'm gonna leave that right there. Um, hopefully in the future, if you do decide not to go for a grant, we could, it's our fiscal responsibility as city councilors to understand the management of the funds throughout the city. And so this is why we're having a meeting um, right now. And it's also a civil right of our residents to be able to enjoy parks. Um, and if they want more parks in their particular neighborhood, we should be looking at all of those options. Um, they should have the access to opportunities that they need. This was not Tracy Woodfield coming to y'all to just talk about this. This was brought to me. Um, it was brought to me from residents and they are not all satisfied with the work that's going on. I'm sorry that I had to report it like that. We might love it, you know, but it's not what my constituents are saying. And so with that, I'm gonna see if anyone else has anything they wanna say.
Oh, I didn't. Being ignored over here.
I didn't see you, Counselor. I didn't see you.
I'm gonna start off by saying Laura's grant writing ability comes from her mother.
Oh, true.
You didn't know that?
We did. I have to recruit her. I need a grant writer. Right, Barry.
Okay, so I'm listening to this and I, we're obviously at an impasse. And this is gonna sound very familiar because the executive branch has made a decision the legislative branch does not agree with. That's where we at. And I think as you look at this list, this is a very impressive list of grants that they have gotten. And I am prejudiced about the Park Department because I think many of you know, my husband Danny is the Park Chairman. So, I've always looked favorably on the Park Department. I think they're all doing a heck of a job. I think we should thank all of you for what you're doing and um, I think grants are written in good faith. I don't think there's any ever guarantee you're gonna get all of them. And there's no guarantee, even if you had applied for that lamp thing, you would have gotten it. So, I don't, this is like Washington. I don't see how you guys are gonna agree.
I don't consider us.
No, we're not what, not, we're not there yet. We're not here.
We're not there yet?
Not, no, we're not gonna get there.
I don't think it's, I think it's wise to be cautious because we don't know what's coming. And I for one, don't wanna be responsible. Anybody losing their jobs, you know, these are different roles. The role of the council, the role of department heads.
Here.
And uh, sometimes we match and sometimes we don't.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't.
Thank you. Council Santalow.
Last word.
City Council at large. Um, Tracy brought up an interesting point I'd like to follow up on. I was on the Park Commission, as you know, Tom, twelve years, nine years as chairman, and I created the Adopt Terrence Program and I gave that to Pat Sullivan and we ran with that and it was very successful. Is there any way we can bring that back again? Or, or, or is there a liability problem?
Let me tell you, uh, Counselor, I think it was a great idea. Um, what's happened over time is that those terraces that were designated and, and the idea that they were gonna be maintained by that person has gone. We, and I don't think there's any now that are currently maintained by the, by the person who it's named for. So we've, we've taken that and under, we do it now.
Yep.
So, we've kinda gone away from that, Counselor, because again, there just wasn't uh, continuity of, of taking care of that problem. It's, it's fallen apart, which is fine, but um, the idea that it would be successful, again, I, I would advise probably not.
So Tom, we'll be able to get to these parks that just don't look tip top shape, uh, because some of them are kinda like beyond marginal. So we'll be able to get to those and clean them up, right, with our, with our crew, right?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I, if, if there was a, a list of some of that need or attention, by all means, let us know.
And I called you, Tom, and you've responded. You know that. I think there were three times I called you recently and the next day they were done, so.
These guys take their jobs.
Yep.
So seriously, and the guys that work underneath them are so serious. So if there are, somebody calls our office, speaks to me, or Pete, or anybody else, we're on, you know, no question about it. So, you know, there isn't a lapse of, of, I will get to that when we get to it, we'll get to that time. You know, so I appreciate, you know, comments and uh, you know, we, we work as does our Forestry Department. They're out there every single day responding to three one one calls. They are so strapped. About just, I mean, think of the number, the volume of trees in the city. So, they're, they're out there. They're doing their work. Alex and his crew gets it done. Um, but like you said, there's always, there's never gonna be stopped because things don't stop growing. Trees, grass, bushes, that's just a fact of life. So we're there. We respond to every single complaint and we get the job done. And I'm proud, so proud of the work that these guys do. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, so one thing I wanted to, to, I guess, highlight is last night we had our Indian Orchard Citizens Council meeting and we had the police there, we had the residents there and we had the Neighborhood Council. Um, and something that I highlighted last night was that the only way that we could keep our neighborhood safe and clean and upcap is a collaboration between all three of us, right? The residents, the city, the police department. Um, and I think that in Indian Orchard, we're doing a good job of that um, by what the, you know, the police reports, we had like no, like almost no crime, thank God. Um, I'm gonna knock on wood. Um, and that's because the, the residents call when they see something. They report it, right? And you're right, um, Director Ash, that when I tell the residents, call three one one and if you see a park that you don't like the way it looks, call three one one, file a report and they'll put it on the list. And they're, they've been pretty good at responding. I know every time I call Pete, I call Mr. Garvey, um, they respond almost immediately. So you're right about that. Thing that is not responded to almost immediately is in the Forestry Department because um, the overgrown bushes that are blocking speed limit signs and all that stuff. I know there's a lot of it, right? And I have a really great idea on how to figure something out, but I don't know if we have enough staff, right? Because I'm thinking have like a contest, right, on the city. So in Ward Eight, um, you know, one team of employees take care of Ward Eight and everyone in each ward and see which ward does the best or something like that. I don't know. Um, but doing, you know, it's a lot of work and I know it's a lot of work, you know. But doing, you know, it's a lot of work, and I know it's a lot of work, you know? So I really truly appreciate what has been done. I know it's not perfect. It's not gonna always look great. But when it doesn't, I think somebody's saying something, you know, and not just at the city, city council, citizens council meeting, but calling three-one-one, calling, you know, Parks Department, calling, you know, D P W to report it. Because if they don't know, they're not gonna respond to it necessarily, you know? And you know the squeaky wheel does get the oil. So, you know, the more you report it, I think the more work will be done.
I think it's a great notion, Counselor, that you have direct contact with somebody like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Cuz that's, that's boots on the ground right there, you know, I mean, I know how anxious Kevin is about getting things done.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam.
Well, I think I have the last word, actually. While I don't like this missed opportunity, I can call Tom and anybody on the staff to get the work done. Guys, again, I'm not against the work that you all are doing. I don't like to leave money on the table, and that's my finance background and my financial lens. I I run a nonprofit that I always gotta look at finances, so if there's a grant opportunity that comes across my desk, I'm just gonna look at it and try to get it, especially one that we've been getting year after year. I don't think that's a heavy lift to rewrite anyways. So I'm just gonna leave that where it's at. None of this meeting was to talk about the work that any of you all did, first of all. Especially you, Laura, cuz I think grants came up so much. It's not, it was not to discredit any of the work that the Parks Department does, okay? I wanna, I wanna say that loudly and clearly. This was, this meeting was particularly, and everybody else brought that part in. But this meeting was about this grant and this missed opportunity, a financial opportunity, not about the work that any of the staff does. But Laura, I did wanna ask you, off the top of your head, do you know of any other grant that we did not get that we have gotten in the past that we didn't write for? I don't know if you know right now, but if you could go back and look, cuz I, I don't know if you know.
Other than the P A R C.
Yeah.
Well, the other.
Oh, we didn't get the water, land and water grant?
No, we, we didn't apply last year.
Oh, we didn't apply.
It hasn't come up for this year.
For this year. So last year, we didn't apply for two grants, P A R C and and the land and water grant. Now, did the land?
Water wasn't.
Land and water. But land and water was available.
It was, yes.
Okay, cuz I want the truth out here. Land and water was available. Did that require a match?
Yes, a fifty percent match.
And was that your decision for land and water grant also not to apply for? Okay, so that's two grants that we said we wasn't gonna apply for because of whatever reason that we've gotten in the past. Okay. And those are the only two that you know of?
That I personally work on, yes.
That you personally work on, okay. So that's, that, I explained the information I'm looking for. Grants that we applied for in the past, that finance made a decision not to apply for. That's citywide, not just Parks Department. Grants we got in the past, yeah, I just want the grants we got in the past that we did not apply for, match, required or not. I just want a comprehensive list of that. So with that being said, I don't have anything else. I don't know if any of your staff wanna say anything. I just really want y'all to know, I appreciate the work that you do, okay? I really do. This wasn't about y'all or your work, though. All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.